From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good afternoon and welcome to the June 17, 2:00 PM, or rather, 2:20 PM session today. Thank you for your patience, my apologies, we have been working straight through closed session, doing your work, so, but my apologies nonetheless. We'll begin by the roll call. Madam clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Parlier.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Sure.
Supervisor Perez.
Here. Thank you so much. I have a couple of items to report out of closed session, so bear with me. Number one is regarding the Director of our Kern County Airports. Today in closed session regarding item 62 of this morning's agenda, I'm pleased to report that by unanimous 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors appointed Bill Lemank as our next Director of Airports. Effective July 12, 2025, Mr. Lemank was chosen from an exceptionally incredibly impressive, strong field of nationwide candidates. It's very exciting to see the interest in Kern County's airport. Mr. Lemank has over 30 years in the aviation industry and most recently served as Senior Planner for the Virginia Department of Aviation, where he oversaw state airport projects and budgets for 31 airports in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Prior to that, he served as a Business Development Director of Newport News Airport, where he helped develop the Airport Master Plan, created a local marketing program to support local businesses and organizations, and achieved 100% hangar occupancy rate. Before working at Newport News and the Virginia Department of Aviation, Mr. Lemank worked as a Flight Instructor and Commercial Pilot for over 20 years. Mr. Lemank holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration from Christopher Newport University and an MBA from Longwood University. He is also certified as a Commercial Pilot, Advanced Ground Inspector, and a Certified Member of the American Association of Airport Executives. The Board is confident that Mr. Lemank has the background, experience, and commitment to Kern County, to make Kern County airports a valuable asset for our community. Mr. Lemank is planning to join us at our next board meeting, June 24th, so that we may formally introduce him. You're gonna like him, Kern County. Secondly, in closed session regarding item number 63 of this morning's agenda, I'm pleased to report that in a vote of 4-1, Supervisor Peters opposed, the Board of Supervisors appointed Kendra Graham as Interim County Council, effective July 5, 2025. Ms. Graham will fill the role upon the retirement of our current County Council, Margot Reison, effective July 4, 2025, her Independence Day. We will have an opportunity to honor Ms. Reison for her years of dedicated and outstanding service at our next board meeting on June 24th. Ms. Graham has been an attorney with the Kern County Office of County Council for over 20 years, and has served as Assistant County Council for the last four years. This board is grateful to have somebody with the qualifications, ethics, and love for Kern County, as Ms. Graham. To serve as interim county council, we appreciate her experience, her knowledge, and honorable character that is essential to this position. Kendra, are you here? Would you please come, would you please come to the podium? This is a very exciting moment, Kendra. I am very happy for you, and I am very happy for Kern County.
Thank you. Board members, thank you very much for this privilege. I am so beyond grateful, and I love working with all of you, I love working with all of the county departments, and I, I promise to do the best job that I know how to do and make you all proud, and I look forward to the next, this next venture in my life. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Very excited for your continued leadership, Kendra, and, and continued development. Okay, moving on, do we have any other reports from closed session?
Madam Chair, your, your board did meet on items 61, 64, and 65, but there is nothing to report on those items.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Reisong. We're gonna move to the Consent Agenda. Consent Matters begin on page two. There are agendas at the back of the room, and also, we have the, the QR code. Are we gonna show that again? Maybe, maybe, okay, well, let's, got it, we're gonna move along. The Consent Matters begin on page two, and they include item three. On page three, items four and items six. However, regarding item number six, I would ask that, is Deputy County Counsel Brian Van Wick available for your statement on item nine? Wick available for your statement on item number six?
Hello, good afternoon. For item number six, the department is ready to go forward today. However, we have received a request from counsel for the appealing party, who has requested that this be continued to July 15. We are not going to oppose that request, but we are ready to go forward today.
Excellent, thank you for stating that, your preparation for the record. Thank you, sir. So that matter will be continued to Tuesday, July 15, 2025, and therefore does not remain on consent. It is rather a matter for continuance. On page four, all items listed, seven through nine. On page five, all items listed, 10 through 14. On page six, all items listed, 15 to 22. And on page seven, items 23 through 27, as well as item 29. On page eight, all items listed, 30 through 35. On page nine, items 37 through 41, and on page 10, items 42 through 47. Consent matters appear in this form and are voted on at once, as they are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff, but they are matters that the public has to be noticed about. If you have a different opinion about that, a member of the public would have a question or want to provide input on consent matters, now would be the time to do so, since I have listed them, and they are pending a motion as we speak. So are there any members of the public who would like to comment on consent? Okay, seeing none, we'll close, close the public portion and return to the board for action.
Motion to consent.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Couch and Flores, please cast your votes on the consent agenda.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. We're gonna move to item number one on our regular agenda, which is public presentations. And this portion of the agenda is reserved for members of the public who would like to address this body on matters that are within our control and our jurisdiction, within our influence, but simply not on today's specific agenda. Now is the time to address those issues. Hello, good afternoon, and welcome.
Thank you. Janine Adams, Tehachapi. Today, looks like Chairman Perez is passing out what I've left for all of you. I've left my card, as well as a poem that I'm going to read into the record. "Color, Love." Because my hair is curly and my skin is rather dark, does not give you reason to make me leave the park. You see, this park belongs to me as much as it does to you, so hop back on your horse and find better things to do. I'm going to sit upon the bench, I'm going to drink, I'm going to feed the doves, I'm going to drink from that fountain, and I'm going to share my love. With everyone I talk to and everyone I see, because God is our Father, they're all the same to me. I'm not choosing colors of the people that I meet, or talking to every few who have shoes upon my feet, their feet. What does clothes and color have to do with love? Should I decide what food to give to each and every dove? None of them are quite the same, yet I feed them all, and so many would be hungry if I didn't come at all. And keep another thing in mind as you gallop on your way, God spreads lots of color on each and every day. Why, there's colors in our flowers, in our rainbows, sunsets too, and that's why He gave colors to you, and you, and you. Thank you. This was written by a Tehachapi resident who lived, my next-door neighbor, a white lady. She gave it to my husband, you'll see she signed it at the bottom, it says, "To my great neighbor Paul," who's black, Parlier knows that. And it was written March of 1990, and I got it in 2018, and today, I share it with you because I feel it's appropriate. And if you're curious about this, come and talk to me after, thank you.
Thank you, Janine. A beautiful poem, my goodness. Thank you. Ma'am, please, you can make your way down. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Karen Bassard.
Hi Karen.
I'm a 19-year county employee, constituent of District 3, and a lifelong resident of Kern County. I'm here to talk about Animal Control Services' new location. I was a volunteer for Marley's Mutts as an event coordinator, fundraising for the spay and neuter portion of Marley's mutts. We fixed so many dogs and cats, or just dogs actually, within Kern County, it made a very little dent. I know the current location is subject to flooding, which is not good for animals, and they are in need of a new facility. County offers low-cost vaccinations and spay and neuter services, mobile services, but that will not help with the dog and cat crisis. So they need somewhere to go with these lost dogs and these dogs that are roaming free. Also, the rescues that, that animal services rely on, they're overwhelmed, they're, they hardly have any room for any animals anymore. So having this larger facility will help with the animals running around Kern County and the ones that are lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Good afternoon and welcome.
Ms. Lisa, M-S dot L-I-S-A, middle initial K, last name P-O-L-L-A-R-D. This is my third time here. The first time I read the preamble, remember that?
Oh yeah.
Did you study?
I did.
And then the second time, I sang "America the Beautiful." And today, I, I came back to read the preamble again, but with, it says preamble of the Constitution explained. Is that permissible?
Yes.
Okay. "We, the people of the United States, public people supposed to hold the power through electing representatives to the government. It's not saying we, the states, government, or King of Supreme. In order to form a more perfect union, to create a better relationship with the states, better government, to govern everything, preview what the document is going to be about. Establish justice. Struggle in the human race. Ensure domestic tranquility, within our home, within our borders, peace makes sure between our borders. Provide for the common defense. Maintain our military, protect our interests of our nation, and protect our nation. Promote the general welfare. The government needs to make sure everything is running smoothly, and so people are prosperous and have a comfortable life." Appreciate your patience with all the work you're doing. We have freedom as Americans. The founders wanted liberty for themselves and future generations be protected. The founders are giving this document authority, making this document the United, uh, excuse me, making this document the Constitution of the United States. Secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and prosperity. Do ordain, establish this Constitution for the United States of America." I had to do that backwards. So I would like to present this to you, District 5.
Thank you.
And congratulations on being our First Lady of California.
How sweet.
So in case you forget, like last time, I didn't have it memorized, you can always look at this at your desk to remind you of what the preamble says, and...
Thank you.
...it is, what it explains, what it means.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that beautiful gift. Sure, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Pollard, appreciate you. Okay, any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move, or seeing no further public comment, close the public presentation, and ask my colleagues if you have any board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Polier.
Well, as I mentioned this morning, there was a forum last week in Boron, and I thanked Animal Services for being out there. What I want to make sure I give a shout-out to, to the other people that were out there, including Public Works, Code Enforcement, they did a great job in helping making that forum a success, and I know it was appreciated by that community. Secondly, Frazier Park is gonna have their 100th year anniversary this Saturday at Frazier Mountain Park. My team was up there last Saturday, sprucing it up, including myself, county staff, GS, General Services, has just been a fantastic help getting everything done. My team was up there again today, doing some, some painting and some other things. But anyway, it's gonna be a great celebration. I think they're gonna have a hot air balloon that, I don't know if they're gonna talk me into it or not, but it's gonna be there, and I just want to make sure the public's aware of that. Thank you so much.
That's so Wizard of Oz. Don't leave us, Chris. Okay, very good, very good. Any other, oh Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Two things. Number one, I wanted to ask that we adjourn this afternoon in memory of Don Schulte. He was a lifelong resident of Kern County, he was a veteran of the U.S. Navy, farmer for many years, volunteer in the community with 4-H, local schools and churches, just a phenomenal guy, and he's gonna be greatly missed, so I would just ask that we adjourn in his memory today. And then, also, I wanted to talk just a little bit about something going on in Kern River Valley that I know has been a huge concern to residents of my district, but that's the public safety power shut-offs that are happening with SoCal Edison. It's creating a very difficult situation up there, and I just want to, number one, share with the community that we are doing what we can from a county perspective, they're, they're not governed or overseen, we don't have any direct regulatory authority over SoCal Edison, but we're working with the state, with SoCal Edison, with our elected officials at the state level to try and figure out a solution for the community up there. And I would just like to share that we're working on that, we're, we're trying to deal with CPUC, we're engaging whatever contacts and resources we have at the state level to try and make a positive impact on that situation. So just wanted to share that info.
Supervisor Peters, thank you. Don Schulte, did I say that right? Thank you very much Supervisor Peters. Any other board member announcements or reports? I don't see anybody punched in. Okay, we're gonna move right along, on to item number five under departmental requests. This is a response to a February 25, 2025 board referral on land use issues regarding California redemptive redemption value. I see Director Oviat is in place, and so the floor is yours, we're eager to hear from you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Johnson, Assistant Director, has been staffing this and will be making the presentation.
Excellent, nice to see you, Paul.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. Perez, members of the board, as Director Oviat noted, my name is Paul Johnson, one of the Assistant Planning Directors with the county. This report is in response to a referral to consider land use issues associated with CRV recycling centers. My presentation today will provide an overview of state mandates, the current processing for the county, information on existing recycling centers, and then present an option for your board to consider. The California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act of 1986, also known as the Bottle Bill, was enacted, much as the name implies, to reduce litter and increase recycling rates. Administered by CalRecycle, the goal is to achieve an 80% recycling rate for eligible containers. Initially, the program was applied to plastic bottles, glass bottles, and metal cans, but just last year, the program was expanded to include additional containers for wine, spirits, fruit juices, vegetable juices, and include non-rigid packaging. Under the Bottle Bill program, consumers pay a surcharge at the point of sale and are eligible for a refund when containers are returned to a recycling center. While local governments are not required to permit CRV recycling centers, CalRecycle enforces a convenience zone policy on supermarkets, where redemption opportunities must be made available, however, there are some exceptions. A convenience zone is a one-mile radius around qualifying supermarkets, and it's relevant to note that not every store that sells beverages is considered a supermarket. CalRecycle has specific criteria to be classified as a supermarket, which includes having a gross annual sales of 2 million or more, offering a full line of grocery items, and it must be listed in the Progressive Grocery Guide. Therefore, supermarkets are generally associated with the Albertsons, the Vons, the Aldi's, and the Walmarts, the Food Max, Bayarta, and such. To comply with convenience zone policy, supermarkets can redeem materials within the store itself, although this was a common practice in the past. Due to sanitary concerns, supermarkets generally look to off-site recycling centers. According to CalRecycle, there are three supermarkets in Kern County, all within incorporated areas, that still continue to process or recycle in-store. But supermarkets generally face little challenge for recycling opportunities, as third-party operators can receive additional benefits from CalRecycle if operating within a convenience zone. If a supermarket is unable to provide an opportunity for recycling, then CalRecycle does impose a $100 a day fee. As I previously mentioned, excepts, exceptions can be granted where a supermarket does not require recycling operation. One of those justifications is that the area is predominantly serviced by curbside recycling. In the county, recycling centers that meet certain standards are permitted ministerially. These include, but as a fundamental basic, is that it is accessory to a beverage-selling retail establishment. In other words, you can't sell beverages in a residential zone, so therefore recycling opportunities would not be allowed in a residential zone. Some of the other development standards include submitting a facility maintenance plan. Man centers must either use an igloo container, which is what you see on the photo on top, or they are allowed up to two cargo containers or roll-off bins. If using cargo containers or roll-off bins, they must be painted, and any openings must be screened from public view. The site is supposed to be maintained in a clean and litter-free manner. There should be no significant impact on parking or the drive aisles for the existing store, and the center shall be certified by CalRecycle or have an application under review by CalRecycle. Recycling centers unable to meet those standards can seek approval through a conditional use permit through the Planning Commission. CalRecycle maintains a list of recycling centers that they certify. These centers have specific requirements and must be, among other items, open a minimum 30 hours per week, and operate at least five days a week to include at least one week, weekend day. Statewide, CalRecycle has certified over 1,300 centers, of which 92 are located in Kern County, which includes incorporated cities. Nearly half of those, or 50, are in the unincorporated areas under county jurisdiction. However, it's very important to note that CalRecycle certification process does not involve local coordination. As a result, county records indicate that 22 of the 50 certified centers have been formally permitted under local land use regulation. That leaves 28 CalRecycle certified centers that require further investigation by county staff. A separate handout listing the 22 approved centers and the 28 centers that need additional investigation was provided to your board this afternoon, and these listings are categorized by district. These listings do not account for any recycling center that may be operating without any state or local approval. Planning staff did conduct site visits of the certified recycling centers, and these are six sites that have demonstrated to be well-maintained and kept free from litter To balance support for state recycling goals and appropriate local oversight, your board may wish to consider requiring a conditional use permit for all new recycling centers. Since not every site has the same characteristics, a conditional use permit could ensure compatibility with surrounding land uses, define specific operational characteristics of the center, provide opportunities for a public hearing, and receive public comments, and enable the Planning Commission to impose site-specific conditions. It is important to recognize that any existing permitted recycling center would enter a legal non-conforming status and not be subject to a condition- legal non-conforming status and not be subject to a conditional use permit unless operations for that recycling center ceased for one year or more and it wanted to reestablish, would then be subject to any new requirements. Or if an existing recycling center proposes to expand or intensify beyond its current use, it would require approval by the Planning Commission through an expansion of illegal non-conforming use. Based on this information, staff recommends that your board receive and file this report and provide direction to staff. And this is a very broad overview, so if there are specific questions that you have, I am available to answer your questions. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you for your thorough and succinct presentation. Very excellent. Are there members of the public who would like to provide any comment or input, ask questions? Okay, I'm going to come back to the board for action. Gentlemen, Supervisor Peters, did you punch in?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Quick question. Under, I think it was convenience zone slide about where CalRecycle requires these opportunities to be available, did I understand that right? That if there's curbside pickup as the, the standard, then that requirement isn't in place any longer?
The supermarket can request that, within the convenience zone, if there is curbside, sufficient curbside recycling, that they do not need to provide opportunity for a recycling operation within that convenience zone. That's correct.
Okay, so with that being said, with AB 1383 in place, pretty much everywhere in Metro Bakersfield could apply for that waiver theoretically. Would that be right?
In speaking with Public Works, 86% of the residentially zoned properties within all of Kern County, to include incorporated cities, have curbside recycling. I'm not exactly sure, without knowing if CalRecycle, because they would approve the exemption, if they would consider that, but 86% is a high number, I would think would be sufficient, yes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Peters. Supervisor Flores?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, staff, for that presentation. I just had a question. The ones, the list that says approved CRV recycling centers versus not approved, what is the difference on that?
Yes, thank you for that question. The approved ones are certified by CalRecycle, and we identified documentation within county records that they had submitted an application to the county, and we gave authorization to operate on those. The ones that need further investigation have been certified by CalRecycle, but we need to do further investigation to determine if there's any additional documents that we may have overlooked. An option may be is they, those operators may have thought that with a state certification, they don't need local approval, so may just need a reminder on them to comply with county standards.
So the needs further investigation means they, they need local approval?
That's correct. You do not have local approval that we're aware of.
I appreciate that delineation a lot. That helps make a difference to make sure everyone's in compliance, both statewide and locally. And then back to the approved CRV recycling centers, does this mean they have to, they have to be in that zone of convenience for the CRV-approved?
That is not a requirement to be within that convenience zone, no.
No.
We do not have that requirement as part of the county standards.
That's part of the county.
As part of the county standards. That's not a requirement, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, there's going to be more questions, but I appreciate you looking into this. I appreciate you getting back with the referral, and I think, you know, some of, some of these are bad actors, and it's a complete mess, so I appreciate the extra i's and ensuring that they're in compliance with all the existing standards and that they have the requisite approval from, from our county. And if also, if someone has been approved by the county, but they're not in compliance with the way the lot is or the way they're operating, what, what do we have in terms of enforcement to get them in compliance?
I can tell you that the, the operations that have been approved, we did send a letter to each of them advising them of their requirement to comply with standards, which again, keep the site clean from litter. So they are aware of that, they are aware of today's meeting, and part of the letter also advised them that if they don't comply with standards or continue to comply with standards, that appropriate action would be taken.
Graduated action.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Excuse me. So we know recycling centers are important for environmental reasons and other reasons, but some of these recycling centers, I mean, let's be honest, it's like bees the honey for homelessness, too. So I think at a minimum, we should go with staff recommendation regarding conditional use permit and kind of go from there and potentially come back. I know the city of Bakersfield does some other things regarding policies regarding fencing, I believe, and maybe even restrictions of C containers in certain places, too. I think that is, you know, something we should look at to help safeguard the quiet enjoyment of properties around these CRV centers, and I'll make a motion that we accept staff recommendation regarding the CUP.
Senator.
We have a motion in two seconds. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Madam Chair, if I may clarify, it is in your board letter. We have a number. We have successfully adopted our housing element, and that will also require some changes to our zoning policies. So by the end of the year, we will be bringing a comprehensive zoning update, and we will now fold this direction from your board into that zoning update. So I just wanted to let you know, don't expect to see this next month. We want to bring a more comprehensive, because as you know, we are amending the zoning ordinance on the 26th for oil and gas, so we need to take this as a step-by-step process in making changes to the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that timeline and roadmap, and thank you for today's work. We're going to move on to the next item, which is item number 28, a legislative matter. Proposed amendments to Administrative Bulletin Number 16, and Nancy Anderson and Thomas Brown will handle this matter. I see Mr. Brown making his way to the staff table. Did you want to make remarks, Nancy, or do we just start with Mr. Brown?
Madam Chair, just, just to reiterate, yeah, this is a request for your board to approve amendments to Administrative Bulletin Number 16 that already existed, but as you know, we've added the Legislative Program Committee that needed to be incorporated and just provide additional clarity around some of the activity. So with that, I'll turn it over to Thomas Brown, our Chief Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs Officer.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today, we're requesting your board's approval of proposed amendments to Administrative Bulletin Number 16, which outlines the county's legislative program and related procedures. Kern County's legislative program is a coordinated effort led by the CIO to manage and advocate for the county's interests at the state and federal levels. Each year, the board approves a legislative platform, which sets broad policy priorities. The platform allows the county to be nimble and efficient in the way we take formal positions on related legislation. In short, it enables Kern to take timely action without repeated board votes. In October 2024, your board established the Legislative Program Committee as an advisory body made up of two board members. The LPC helps shape legislative advocacy strategies, reviews key issues not covered by the legislative platform, and evaluates the overall effectiveness of the county's legislative program. Their input plays a critical role in determining how and when the county takes official positions. The proposed amendments before you today are intended to improve clarity around how legislative policy positions are evaluated and approved. The goal is to ensure that all board members are fully informed about the process and that the process is memorialized for the benefit of staff and the public alike. So now let's talk, walk through the three ways an official county position letter may be issued. So path number one is a direct request from the CIO to the chairman of the board. If a proposed position aligns with the current legislative platform, the CIO may email a recommendation to the chairman of the board, copying all other board members. Board members have 24 hours from the time the email is sent to raise any objections to the CIO's recommended action. If no objections are received within that time, the county's position letter is signed and sent to the state or federal lobbyists for immediate action. In cases where board members believe the item is potentially controversial or would benefit from further vetting and public discussion, they must alert the CIO within 24 hours of the initial email, so the item can be brought to a public board meeting. In such cases, the item will be agendized under departmental requests, and the full board considers the item and votes on a recommended county position with a majority vote required to support the action. Path number two is through the Legislative Program Committee. If an item isn't covered by the legislative platform, it will be placed on the LPC's next agenda. The committee will discuss and make recommendation, make a recommendation to the full board on whether to support, oppose, or take another position. Path number three is through the full board. If an item isn't covered by the legislative platform, but an issue arises too quickly for LPC review, especially if there's an urgent hearing or rapidly approaching legislative deadline, the matter will go straight to the full board. This path is also used if board members request further discussion on CIO items, and sends, on items CIO sends to the chair for immediate action under the legislative platform, as discussed a moment ago. In either scenario, the item will be placed on the next available board agenda under departmental requests. The full board will subsequently consider the item and vote on a recommended county position with a majority vote required to support the action. To promote transparency and improve efficiency, the bulletin also includes clarifying amendments regarding the roles of the chairman and individual supervisors. First, the chairman may delegate signature authority on county position letters to the vice chairman. This need may arise in situations where the chairman is unavailable to sign correspondence that is time-sensitive, or in situations when the chairman's stance on a policy issue differs from the board's majority. Second, individual supervisors can express personal positions on legislation and their role as district representatives. Their correspondence must be issued using district letterhead and clearly state that the view is their own and not that of the full board. These updates formalize existing practices and will ensure consistent handling of legislative matters moving forward. So to summarize and reiterate, Madam Chair, members, CIO strives to coordinate the county's legislative program in the most efficient and effective manner possible. The amendments presented to you today aim to make our legislative process more transparent, timely, and responsive to your board's decision-making. Therefore, the recommended action is for your board to approve the amendments to Admin Bulletin Number 16 and authorize staff to post the updated version of the bulletin to the county's website. This concludes staff's prepared comments. We're available for any questions you may have.
This is incredibly user-friendly and easy to follow. Thank you. I appreciate your presentation and your hard work on, on managing these just very nuanced realities of five politicians, if you will. So thank you. I appreciate it very much. Are there any members of the public who would like to weigh in on this matter? Okay, seeing no interest from the public, I'm going to close public hearing and return to the board for action. Gentlemen?
I was pushed.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Supervisor Peters, I missed that. Forgive me.
No problem. Is there a place where, where letters of either support or opposition that the county have sent out can be found by, say, a member of the public wanting to know stance on a particular item?
Yeah, Supervisor Peters, to the chair of the county, actually, we post that to the CIO's website currently.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Supervisor Couch, please, you have the floor.
Do we, do we have a, a distribution list, for example, when we send letters of opposition support or what have you to appropriate committees or whatever in Sacramento or in DC, do we copy people here? For example, KEDC or Chambers of Commerce, any, any of those groups? I think that would be a good idea, because there have been a couple of times that I've been approached by members from there that said they were going to take a, a different position, or they had taken a different position, and they might not have done that had they known how we were going to weigh in on it. So do we have a master list of who we share that with? Might include the media as well?
Supervisor Couch, to the chair, we do not. It's usually a case-by-case basis, depending on the subject matter of the, the policy issue that we're dealing with.
So maybe we could talk later and develop a short list or a long list, or the more we talk about it, the longer the list will get, probably, but I'd appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
I, I think it's a great idea. Thank you. Supervisor Peters?
Thanks, and just to add a little clarification under the end of that, if you look up the bills on the, the state's website, it'll say, it'll have the analysis of support and opposition, and it'll have a list of everybody that's filed support or opposition for that as well, so people can look up the bill and see whether or not a certain body has supported or opposed that.
That's really helpful. Thank you so much. Anyone else? And can we entertain a motion, gentlemen? Oh, yeah, the committee members. Supervisor Flores?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by our committee members. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thomas, thank you. Our final item this afternoon is very exciting, and it is item number 36, the Proposed Memorandum of Understanding with Service Employees International Union, SEIU, 521, for bargaining units 1 through 6, and a whole host of details I'll let you describe. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tracy Eldridge, Chief Human Resources Officer. After a year of negotiations, we are very happy to present for your approval the Memorandum of Understanding with Service Employees International Union, Local 521. Just a few of the items within the agreement include a 6% salary increase, a one-time $1,500 cash payment, equity adjustments totaling over $3.3 million, an increase in bilingual pay, along with the addition of five new languages, as well as a new personal holiday. The estimated cost of the proposed MOU is $39.6 million. Again, we are very pleased to present the MOU for your approval. However, before I close, I want to thank my team, specifically Michael Gulyart and Michael Johnson, County Council Kate Zimmerman and Kyle Holmes, and of course, from the County Administrator's Office, Elsa Martinez, Stacy Kudahara, and Nancy Anderson, for their collaborated efforts over the past year. Thank you.
Your team has been so masterfully devoted to a very complicated process that got very stressful more than once, and I, I think it was just handled incredibly well by the county. Our workforce is 5,200 strong. They are massive, SEIU in particular, I'm sorry, the SEIU portion of our 8,000-member body is, SEIU, 5,200. Their contributions are matchless, incomparable, and it's just so nice to be done with this phase. I think it was some, some necessary growing pains. We learned a ton through the process, and I'm really glad that we're here right now, and I'm very grateful to the SEIU negotiating team, who continued to come back to the table creatively, you know, despite seeming like there was no progress, continued to be creative and assertive in representing such a huge swath of our county family. I want to express my gratitude for that, and that we're here and we resolve these things in a civil and peaceful manner is just in and of itself extraordinary. And so, thank you. I tip my hat to all of you involved in that process. Are there any members of the public who would like to come and weigh in on this matter? Now would be the time to do so. Okay, seeing no interest in that, we're going to close it and return to the board. Supervisor Peters, are you, was that now or earlier? Sorry about that. Okay. Gentlemen, if you have no comments, I'd certainly appreciate a motion and moving forward on this matter.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Flores and a second by Supervisor Polier. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay. Good job, SEIU. It's nice to see you here. Appreciate you so much. Thank you for doing the grittiest, hardest work of Kern County. We appreciate you so much, and I hope that this leads to a, you know, a better, a more productive conversation moving forward, as situations change here and the outlook looks more promising for Kern County, which I believe is, is, is well upon us. I think these conversations will continue to be more productive and healthy, and I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you. God bless you and your families. This brings us to the end of our time this morning, this afternoon, excuse me. Is it Don Schulte? Did I say that correct? God bless him and his legacy, his family. We cherish his memory, and we make that part of the record today as we adjourn in his incredible life, legacy, and contributions to Kern County. With a motion, with a motion by a passionate, motion by Supervisor Peters. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Peters. And in that, in that loving legacy. We are adjourned.